In the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Good evening.
In the interest of full disclosure, I have to say, last week when the issue of the highway was proposed, it came up, and I drew a blank, and I was at the Personnel Policy Board where it was signed and was passed on to the finance committee. And I should have informed you last week that it was in fact passed on to the finance committee. I just drew a blank. Didn't.
Did you have breakfast?
Today or then? Today, I don't remember then, I haven't got a prayer. So, in the interest of full disclosure, I was gently reminded that I knew that when I got left here and got an email. So, we have a 6:30 appointment with Mr. Boltley.
Hi.
Hi.
Hey Kurt.
Chair, I'm in, board members. What I'm here for is an extension, pretty much what I've done for people in the neighborhood along Strong Road, and that is just to let them know that there's a project that's taking place on Strong Road, and I'm here because the project abuts town property, and therefore by extension, everybody in town in this room, for some people may be interested in the project, and it may be important enough for them to want to learn a little bit more about it, and be involved. The town property is a ball field, a recreation area to the north of the proposed project site. The proposed project site is the former Goro property on Strong Road, and with a abutting town property, I want to take a few minutes and just discuss it with people here and in the town as possible. The proposed project, the abutting ball field and recreation area, again, is on a Goro property, and it proposes to divide the Goro property into 1,200-foot-long dead-end street with 12 building lots and 3A and R lots. And they're able to develop the land according to the rules and regulations of Southampton, and we all realize that in the street and the neighborhood. But at this point, there's been a couple issues or discussions we'd like to have at the public hearing, I should say, the public hearing is November 6th. I can front the planning board Wednesday, November 6th at 7:00 PM, so anybody interested in attending should know that that's the date. With my neighbors, I've given them my cellphone number, if they're interested in learning more, if it's okay to do so, I'll give it now, it's 413-230-4671. I'll repeat that at the end of the presentation, but if you want to learn more, or become involved, feel free to call me, and like my neighbors and I, we'll talk about things that hopefully make it a better project. It's not adversarial with us and the developer or the planning board, we think the three parties together can work on a project that is in the best interest of the town and the neighborhood, hopefully. I know that's what the planning board's going to be looking at, is look at the subdivision that they can exercise some discretion if that benefits the town and hopefully the town and the neighborhood to buy. One point we do have, that we have made known, is the length of the dead-end street that's proposed. The rules and regulations of Southampton call for 500-foot dead-end street. The Board of, the City Planning Board does have the discretion to allow a waiver from a 500-foot required, and has, the Planning Board has done that in cases, last time, 15, 20 years at town. And they may certainly consider doing that again here. What goes beyond the 500-foot, and how much further beyond 500 feet the dead-end road extends, is also at the discretion of the planning board. You add another 100 feet, you add another 200 feet, you add another 300 feet, and if you do so, what is the benefit to the town and for the neighborhood? And that's an issue the planning boards are going to be looking at, November 6th, with November 6th events, and we'd like to be able to weigh in and add some value to those discussions. So, the dead-end street is a 1200-foot dead-end street proposed, so the rules call for 500, the planning board certainly has the discretion to give a waiver from the 500, and to consider how many feet down 500 it will give. There are, there is some thought that a buffer strip, a vegetated buffer strip, a abutting, the proposed project, and the ball field is something that certainly the neighborhood feels that that would be a good thing. And I'm not speaking personally, but I have talked to a few people in the recreation field committee, they feel it'd be a good thing, that we have this proposed subdivision right next to the new town ball field, and it'd be nice, you know, to add a 20, 30-foot strip, that some vegetation get planted, and keeps the integrity of the ball field recreation area, and the integrity of the people's backyards and subdivisions. That's an example of something we've been looking for within the discussions. There's also preservation of some other natural features in that area, on that land, but now's the time to be able to discuss with the planning board and the developer, whether or not that can be put aside for the benefit of the neighborhood and the town. I can tell more about that, I'll bring that up November 6th, where those areas may be. So, that's one, you know, that's a proposed project, the town's in the butter, the town people are the butters, it gives me opportunity in this venue to get the word out to people in town as we have in the neighborhood. If I get two calls, that's fine, if I get 22 calls, that's fine, whatever it may be, and we'll look at adding some value to this project, and making it something that the landlord should have a right to do, but do it in a way that benefits the neighborhood and the town. So, the next steps that are coming up on this project, and all the interested town people in the neighborhood should know, is that there's, the neighborhood approval has been made by the planning board, and in doing so, they've allowed the proposed project to be heard at the November 6th public hearing. One of the issues will be the allowable length of the dead-end street, that the planning board will consider, and whether they exercise discretion for the benefit of the town and the neighborhood, and how they do that, as well as possibly vegetated buffer strips, sidewalks, et cetera. Other appropriate issues may be discussed with the planning board at that time. That's November 6th here in this room at 7:00 PM. I've given my cellphone number, like I said, to my neighbors, they normally see it on a sign by McQuiston Street Park every time this year anyhow. So, anybody else in town that wants to call it is 413-230-4671, and we'll see how we see making this project a little better. Any questions?
Yeah Kurt, I just want to mention that one of the memos that you sent us, your cellphone is incorrect on the memo you're giving.
Initially, yeah. It is 413-230-4671.
I don't have any questions on that, I mean, I've sat on the planning board with you in a number of years, so 1200, I can't say 1200 feet is the longest dead-end street I've heard in a long time.
We'd like, we'd like the planning board to consider, if they want to grant extra money, to look at a standard such among the lines of what is the average additional length and waivers that have been granted? What's the average over the last 10 years or so? Use such standards to say, okay, average, the town has allowed beyond 500 feet, maybe an extra 200, 300 feet, and may put this road out to 800, 900 feet, and it's a legitimate standard to look at, and say use the average.
The only thing I can say about that Kurt, every, every extension, there was a reason and a cause for the extension. Some were justified to be longer, some I believe were shut down, some were compromised, you know, and there was many ground, so, I mean, I know that, I've been here for 30 something years, and I think there's very few that are at 500 in the last 15 or 20 years. There's been a lot of extensions, and you know by being on the planning board, when you get beyond a certain point, they like to have secondary access.
Well, you don't have to have second.
No, it's all factored into the rules and regulations, but they have a right to make those waivers, but, you know, this, when I was thinking, when I saw the plans, I had to review it completely yet, but it starts, I think part of the justification is it's going to be starting behind first in our lots. The road's going to go through there, but it's going through the front edge with the signage on those A and R.
So, my goodness, so my goodness.
Like anything else, they still have to see if it's feasible to put a project in and how many lots they got. That's the planning board's job, not ours, but, you know, it's got to be a worthwhile project, and, you know, for the town, number one, and I believe the standards are such that they do have the flexibility to grant a, an extension, but, you know, that's usually after two or three hearings and process is established, and, you know, certain things that come into their decision-making is.
Do you have the map?
So, what is the justification for that, and does it fall in with what they've done with that?
Yeah, the planning board is not compelled, I know, to allow whatever's been requested on whatever length it may be, nor are they compelled to have to grant additions if they've done it once or twice before town. They're not compelled to have to accept the longest dead-end street they've ever accepted up to this point. There's other standards that could be measured, and one of them is take a look at your average that you've allowed since then, over the last 10 years. Take a look at that, anything beyond that. I think that the dialogue really is, what benefit is this to the town? How does this benefit the town and the neighborhood? Maybe some things done in the subdivision that actually counter-stick.
Oh, that's why they're here.
That's why they're here. Any concerns there in a, in a manner that they can understand?
There's two reasons for the, for a short cul-de-sac. One is its control of the amount of development that can happen in town, and two, in my memory and Hank's here, too, every time we've extended a road, for whatever reason, the town got something in exchange for that, is my memory, we got a park, we got a piece of land, we got access to other land, we always got something for what we gave, and in my memory, it's the length that we granted was sometimes 100 feet or...
No, there's something, I was bringing that as a long story.
There's a lot of dead ends at our, there's a lot of dead ends at our 500 feet in town, just so we can review of what's out there. There's a lot of waivers that have been granted.
There's a lot of, I'm facing a majority of them.
No, the average length of a waivered road though, those that got a waiver, is much, much, much less than 1200 feet.
Hank.
Well, I was just going to make a comment, I don't, that sounds to me like the longest cul-de-sac, and I know in my 10 years on the board, and Mike has been out longer than I have, by far, but I have a couple of questions. One is, and I saw a miniature version of the plan, but I didn't look closely at it, are sidewalks included in this plan?
I'm not sure. The full decal plans are in the city clerk's office, I took a quick look, I didn't pick up the decal.
Hank, sidewalks on both sides.
They're going to put sidewalks on both sides?
Yeah, what they've done, they've put sidewalks on both sides, but in recent waivers, they, they waived one side or the other.
And I should point out, the planning board has waived nothing yet. They've allowed it to proceed to the, this subdivision, a dependent subdivision, but the decision on whether they bear a waiver, and the decision on how much additional feet could go with that waiver is yet to be made, and it won't be made until the public hearing that is finished. And part of the discretion the planning board has to do is in the best interest of the town. Part of that, of what hardwrecked in is do what they get from the town. You know, what does the town think, what is the best interest of them, if in fact they want to extend the road beyond even the average length of a, of a waivered road?
One thing to recall when you're at the hearing, I think the subdivision regulations do allow the planning board to acquire that a piece of the property be set aside and not built upon for some term, and I can't remember, whatever, it's two years to three years, to give the town a chance to consider whether it wants to buy the property to be used for a part of someone's purpose. And all it says is it can't be built on.
That's a good point.
For a period of time. And one might want to say that, well, the playing fields are right across the street, why would you want a park there? The playing fields are on Plainmount, they're playing fields. And in fact, in the Hanson Valley with the property, there were a lot of peaceful lots set aside for that purpose, if we're talking about trying to get something back as...
Right, there's some thoughts on that. The ball field committee had, you know, it's a term, but the objective of the ball fields that was in the plan, the design and construction, has been met. We do not need additional land for ball field areas at this point. What we, what a vegetated buffer strip, you know, not for ball field, but to help them, and there's other natural features on that land that certainly would be of interest to the people in the neighborhood and possibly people in town, and getting it right away, like they say, Mike, you know, to access land. Now, in the discussions I remember, a developer may say, well, we'll set it aside, which is actually, correct me if I'm wrong, the decision can be made right in the public hearing, whether that will be set aside for, say, a dollar for the town to be able to purchase that town deed. And that's something that would be very beneficial to get that, almost it's a giving of the property, not that they'll sell it at market value, and they go to town and try to get market value on a piece of property.
Kurt, you've served on the planning board, you're well aware that all of this falls under the planning board's jurisdiction, and this board really has no jurisdiction.
Right.
I'm still trying to get squared away in my head, why we're here tonight?
Because the town's ball field is a major barge to the project, and this gives me a venue to let the people in town know that there's a project going on next to town property that they may be interested in, and if they are, they can give me a call.
Where are the butter on the north side? Do I understand?
That's why, because that'd be something that doesn't come in here first, so you're talking over the board's line.
And there does appear to be a question, why is there much on that plan?
There is.
It may be a little rich, but have you turned it over to the board?
We don't need it for ball field, and we don't need it that wide for vegetated strip. If they want to give land to the town, by all means, give land to the town, but if it's that instead of something that's more desirable, you know, we don't need that 140-foot strip of what you're, of ball field project.
The width, 140?
140.
When they go to develop the land, I mean, are they going to take the trees down? And that's right on the tree line.
There's no trees there at all.
What is that, the whole empty field on the side? I thought it was okay, that's where it's a cornfield.
There might be a couple of saplings on the uncle property.
Well, there's nothing there. I thought for some, in my mind, I was thinking there was a tree line.
There are trees at Kurt's.
Yeah, people going to McQuiston Street Park. If you drive, the people in town, if you drive, if you drive to the town along Strong Road on a Saturday morning or Saturday afternoon, it's off you left, it's the old Goro property, there is a wooded line that meets in the back corner of this proposed project, but it's, it's wide open, it's wide open and right adjacent to the ball field.
And according to the community.
And I just want to reiterate, there's a difference between playing field and playground. That's firstly. The second thing is, if it impacts the town as a butter, who at the hearing is going to represent the interest of the town?
I don't know if there's, does the town have to have an official representative, or is it just the town residents who are interested?
No, we'd have a right to, I would think of...
Well, that's the Parks Commission, they could, they could go there and represent them.
I was going to say. Have they nominated, Mike, had they been turned, had they been turned over yet to spend the authority? So, I think certainly they have a right, but I think we could, one of us could.
Yeah, hopefully.
But I think we should discuss amongst, if we're going to go, or if someone's going to go for us, we should discuss amongst ourselves as a priority what we want to do, or what we're trying to get out of it.
Right.
As in a butter.
You have my cellphone number?
I do.
The right one?
230-4671.
I have a question. Is the reason that they want the road to be 1200 feet because of the number of?
Yeah, they can put more lots.
That's the only reason, is to put more lots.
And I'd be remiss if I didn't point out, the people in the neighborhood are concerned about traffic. The ball field hasn't really geared up with traffic, can't fight the will, and there's going to be a lot of traffic along Strong Road. Now, there's an additional houses, and maybe more than needs to be there, adding to that traffic.
How many, how many lots are they getting in?
12.
12, plus 3A and R, 15 out of all properties, is what it adds.
12.
12 is an A, 12 is a subdivision, yeah.
So, if they had a shorter road, they would have less properties?
Correct.
They'd make less money.
Correct. And if the standard applied is, you get the length, at the getaway, you get the average length of the waiver, it would cut that road back considerably.
Again, I don't remember, but I seem to think, maybe I'm wrong, but most of them were 100, not much more.
No, there was some...
Like which one?
Whispering Meadows was given.
That was...
That Whispering Meadows was a unique case, because that was a 100 feet, that was a proof strip.
It was supposed to be a proof strip.
And we got them, we made two dead ends.
But the point is, it was a dead end, it's greater than 500 feet.
What we got in that case, is we cut the length of the street, we cut the number of lots, and we, and we got concessions for the ball fields.
There was some benefit to the town.
And some was the Helen Drive, and that was established.
And we got...
I think it was, they went 250 feet or 300 feet to the front of the cul-de-sac, and they could build it right up.
And then, but we got the little park out of that.
Correct.
And we got the...
Golden Circle, we got a right-of-way to some nice property.
We got right-of-way to the back.
Yeah, for the water main.
So, these are considerations. Again, we're not adversarial, but I think the developer, the planning board, the first town resident can work out something that may...
But ideally, Kurt, that's what the board's all about, that's what it's supposed to do.
Planning board.
Yes, to have these things to be considered, make a decision based on best, best information they have, and represent them.
And that discretion that they exercise, what is of the benefit to the town and neighborhood? It can be not at the back.
But that's their discretion.
It's their discretion within foot from the town and the neighborhood.
Well, a butter is a special.
Yeah, yeah. So, that's it, so the meeting's November 6th, 7:00 PM, that's essentially my message to anybody interested in, call me if you're interested in learning more, and I guess, Mike, I might hear from a representative selection?
Well, I think we, I think if the board so desires, we'll get that up for. Yeah, I don't know, what's our, what's our schedule like? We have a meeting, when's it actually, it's going to be that Tuesday night before the meeting.
Right, the fifth.
Well, normally, if I'm not mistaken, these meetings go on on a Monday night, they're extended, but...
I think you've got to, you can't count on that, you've got to prepare to address the issue on the night, it's there, you can't...
What is, what times are meetings at?
7:00 PM.
So, the question becomes, does this board have a desire to discuss amongst itself now, what we, what our position would be as in a butter?
And every town resident can also speak up on their own without the...
Right.
...of course, right?
Yeah, right, yeah. No, 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 we're not speaking for the residents of the town, we're speaking, I would say the owner of the property.
Whispering Meadows.
As a butter.
I mean, another thing that I would, I want to ask Hank, who's here, I mean, he's got a skeleton committee, but does this fall in to the master plan that we all agreed to recently? Is it pretty much, you know, going parallel along to all we're looking for?
Well, I think it's, in one sense, it's not, because it's developed away from Route 10. It's more suburban sprawl. But, you know.
It's more...
Given the way the law is written.
Right, it's more losing the rural character of the town.
Oh, yeah.
Look what happened to Pleasant Street.
And, so, I mean, in that sense, no.
Well, we spent a lot of time there.
On the other hand, the plan is only a plan, and certainly the property owner has a right, and the planning board has a responsibility, et cetera.
How long is the right-of-way on the cul-de-sac on Pleasant Street?
Well, that's because it's got a special subdivision by law.
Oh, because it can't, yeah, it's all the way around, agricultural.
Well, it's completely surrounded.
Right, so there's...
It has 10, 10 building lots.
Right, but the most recent subdivision would be Pleasant Street, and it's an agricultural preservation cluster development.
Is approved by the planning board or something?
Yeah, yeah, cluster development, which obviously, we keep more land in agriculture and...
More than, I think they showed 22 lots, if they didn't do the agricultural preservation, and they cut it down to 10.
So, there was the benefit of...
But we have two exits.
Yeah, if the process is taking place now, it's going to be, you know, at least initiated a week from now, some time to think about it, talk about it, and come into kind of a unified message if there is one.
I can visualize the aquifer map, but it's possible that property's on the aquifer, not that that rules it out.
There is zone two.
I think, I think, sorry, I'm saying Southampton is it.
Well, and then, he gets the infamous stream that runs across to...
One infamous stream.
The one that was alleged and all the...
Little bit, but never found it. Even the dirt and dirt.
What about the pipe?
The pipe is about 60 feet, probably.
I don't, I don't think it's private, maybe it touches that area, it touches the ball field somehow.
I think the back section, I'm not sure if that's the other butter's lot or what, because there's another lot back there that comes off of Whispering Meadows.
The board's pleasure, do we wish to discuss the options, or do we wish to...
No, I think we should, when we're done with business tonight, we should bring it back up to...
Well, we just do it, I think it would be nice to have, just get this done with, you know, I think it would be important to have somebody there, Mike or Ed, to be there, and anyone else who wants to be, but somebody to actually speak for them.
Well, I go, I'll be giving my comments as far as how it's, how it's supposed to be built, and what the comments are in regards to that. I do make comments as far as, you know, buffers, and what's planned alongside of them, from that perspective. Kurt and I both have had concerns about, in summer hours out there where there's activity there, is there any way we can soften the blow with noise and activity in that field? And, you know, more trees will help out.
Yeah.
Other zone would help out.
Was it 145 feet?
I think that open space is showing for the homeowners association. I think it's 140 foot.
So, 145 feet, a street, a strip of land that goes basically behind one of the first street lots, all the way back, all the way back, so that is potential.
We need 30 feet of that, we don't need 140.
It's whether, if it's a homeowners association that's going to maintain it, you know...
I'd rather see them create it to the town for dollars, than let the town maintain it.
Find a bunch of trees.
You got the trees, and then it's not up to neighbors whether they keep those trees or not.
But the disadvantage to that is it comes off the tatchels.
But it's already off the tatchels, Mike.
It's already off the tatchels, you still got some number of lots.
The strip back, the strip for the...
Yeah, but someone's going to pay for that.
Someone's going to pay extra, and if it comes off, we're done.
Well, I, well...
About 20 for a lot.
It's not a buildable lot.
You don't lose a lot because...
But you gain more by the buffer.
I have a question, what is, what is behind that development, the far end of the proposal?
What is tree line and several houses? What is?
Tree line and several houses, there's a couple of houses tucked in the back.
So, that's, the park, conservation line doesn't extend up to the back of the...
Not in present.
All right, I'm going to bring it back, does the board wish to discuss this now, or later, or when?
Let's do it now, just have it done with.
All right, so what would you like to, what would you...
I will try to attend, but I think I'm, I'm not as well-versed as Edward and yourself.
Well, no, I would try to attend also, but my first question, what does the town, do we favor a 1200-foot cul-de-sac, is the first question, and remembering that 500-foot cul-de-sac limits development, and back to the master plan, therefore it limits urban sprawl or suburban sprawl by, by doing that.
Well, I would say that, you know, that decision would be up to the planning board. I think, you know, I really do believe in the landlord's rights, and if they want to try to do, to get it, as long as they want to, that's their right to do that. I would just think want to try to soften the blow of the development either way, by having a buffer zone of some sort with plantings of trees, because otherwise, you know, for some reason I thought it was into the woods, but it's not, it's just going to be, it's going to be, it's going to be ugly.
This is good Whispering Meadows.
There's not a tree on the property.
No, there's no trees up.
If you know where Whispering Meadows is, this is Whispering Meadows without the trees on either side.
And then, who's going to want to live there if there are ball games going on all the time, there's no sound?
See the last houses being built.
Benefit the people that live there.
Right, so the sound there would actually help with the, the selling of the property.
I mean, there was no problem with Whispering Meadows selling those lots, and the last house is going up now, up against our ball fields.
Southampton's always been a good place to live, it's always been pressured to extend 500 feet, this is nothing new. I mean, and it's always pretty much held, you know, for certain, and the average is much less than 1200 feet.
Do you know what the average is?
I have a sensitive.
What is your sensitive? Now, not, knowing we're not going to...
It was just initial information that was provided to me, but the average on a waivered street is 764 feet long.
I would like to point out, too, to back up what Hank said earlier, you look at something like Helen Drive Extension, they got about 200 or 300 feet out of it, they paid dearly for that.
Is that Town Cross?
Cross, yeah.
And there's a right of way from town cross down.
They paid dearly for that two or three hundred feet by giving, by giving up a whole building lot.
Frank Wayne had.
Uh, Goldsland Circle, whatever it is, uh, they gave a very large tract of land, uh, to the town and back. But our water made, we ran a, a line all the way out to Ponderoy Meadow. Basically, these are shorter extensions that were granted and there was serious compensation made just in order to get these. Now, again, it's not the purview of this board to make these decisions, but much of what we do in town is driven by tradition, by precedent, by curtsies. Find out what the averages are. Well, the bottom line is the averages are a lot less, without question, than what's being requested here. And, and a lot was given up in order to get this. These considerations need to enter into the equation, not what you're going to quite explain.
Yeah, I just wanted to respond to this idea that the developer has a right to make money. I used to be, uh, uh, I believe in absolute rights, Thomas Paine, I've become a kind of Burkean. Your rights you have or existed are extended to you by the law. And the law permits a limit on the length of the subdivision road. And if it's in the best interest of, of the town, uh, to either limit it or, uh, or grant a somewhat shorter extension or to make a trade-off. As my friend here has pointed out, uh, if they were getting something significant for the town, that's what the town should do.
The only thing, the only response out of Hank, and I do respect your opinion is that, you know, in some of the discussion you've had and, and talking to some of the people in town that do own large tracts of land and were developing their land. Um, they feel that they, you know, they were, what had happened on like Helen, that there was a blackmail, and I'm just using their term, just for full discussion, that there was a blackmail per se to get that park just so they could do the extension and that's.
You got this park?
Uh, the, the small park, the, on Helen Drive.
That?
But I'm just, I'm just.
Well, let me, let me respond to that, that's misinformation.
I know, but I'm just saying that's, I said, I did use the word.
That reporter got it wrong, Tom Cross offered that land upfront.
I, okay, Hank.
He didn't ask you, he offered it upfront.
I'm sorry, Hank, I'm sorry, all I'm saying is perception.
Wasn't blackmail.
I know, but the perception, and I know I must've hit a nerve because it's been brought up in the past and I just wanna make sure we go through this process appropriately so it doesn't look like it is what I said it was, which is blackmail to get something out of the developer.
I don't think it's blackmail, I don't think it's blackmail if you say you, you went beyond the average length of the wave.
I'm just, I'm just telling, Mike, I'm just, I'm just saying that was a perception.
Let me bring it back, let's bring it back.
Okay.
Again, the fundamental reason I think for five hundred, right, dead end cul-de-sac was limited development. And we've always maintained that, you know, we, we had to have a good reason to extend it. As long as I was on the planning board, Hank was on the planning board, Kurt was on the planning board. We didn't grant it willy-nilly, we didn't grant twelve hundred feet, we granted it for a reason. Otherwise, every, everybody who takes a poll in this town says, why do you like this town? Because of its rural character. And every time we extend a cul-de-sac to twelve hundred feet and double the number of lots that you can put on that cul-de-sac, we put another nail in that coffin. The question becomes, why are we going to the meeting? What is our purpose to tell the meeting why we don't want a twelve hundred, if we don't want it, if you wanna vote in favor of a twelve hundred foot cul-de-sac, that's your right and the town's right. But if we don't want a twelve hundred foot cul-de-sac, what is it representative of this board gonna tell the planning board at the hearing to tell them what we do favor?
Well, I think there's two roles there, Mike, I think there is a vote, and I'm not saying we should take a vote, but we could take a vote, what the opinion of the board of selectmen is. But there's also, as a citizen, you could go to that meeting as well.
Yeah.
And voice your opinion.
Yeah.
So I mean, just.
At this point in time, the, the majority rules here.
Right, and whatever the, and that's.
You can go tell, tell the board whatever you want, the planning board whatever you want, but at this point in time, when we take a vote, it.
It's whatever's, right, and, you know.
Official position of the board.
If I, and in the past, whenever I've disagreed, you know, I've always said, but the majority rules, and you know I go along with the majority and I support the majority, but I do have.
Circle this back, we gotta get, cause we got other businesses, what is our position?
Would it help to, to get the feedback and discussion over the next week and make a little meeting here and convey it to you?
But no, we won't have the time to really.
We won't have the time next meeting?
No, that's why I'd like to get the discussion going and we're going along with the discussion just as I thought it would go and I just, you just, you know, if someone wants to make a motion, that's fine, I just.
Well, well, here's the other thing too, we're looking at one side, there's another side, we should be looking at all the sides while we run down and make a decision. I mean, do we have a presentation from the other people, what's going on? No, do we have Kurt here with his concerns? Yes, we have, uh, two planning board members stating that they've done things in the past based on waivers and they got something in. I personally feel this board hasn't changed those, those views or those policies either. That, you know, this isn't a, a maximum developed plan that comes in, it will be whittled down based on observation, hearing results and what people said. My feeling is, we do not have enough information to go in there and say, we're taking the stand. I believe the planning board will do the right thing, look at the plan as a whole and come back and say, yes, they want a thousand foot cul-de-sac, but no, they're not gonna get it. Do I know that for a fact? No, but they're gonna say, why are they gonna get this? Why? Okay, and they're not here to tell us that and we're gonna form an opinion on that? I don't think so. I do think that we should form an opinion based on things like Kurt said. I, I've been involved with that field next door, we didn't have enough money to complete the ideal complex, but we built all the fields, the parking lot and the plants and trees. We need a buffer on the side, I agree with Kurt on that. I agree with, and I like to see a planted buffer, whatever brings. To soften sound, to take the impact of the ball field out of the neighborhood so much and improve it that way. As a resident, as a, uh, somebody that has the best interest into that ball field, I'd like to see that. As far as the length of the cul-de-sac, that's based on the circumstances and why they're coming forward to give a recommendation why they want the maximum. To me, they're gonna have to prove why they want to get the maximum. And that's the planning board's job, not our job, cause we don't have all the information to make that.
So we agree, I just, I say make a motion, I just wanted to have a discussion and you're right, we don't have enough information. But the problem is, is that the hearing's next week and so what the motion can be is that, well, we don't have an opinion at this time because we don't have all the information and I think that's appropriate as well.
I understand.
Huh?
Well, and I'm just gonna say that we're, we're not sitting here as the, the adjudicary body to hear both sides. We are tonight sitting here as in a butter, not as an adjudicary body, it's not up to us to hear both sides. We're here to express our opinion as in a butter, not to hear the facts of this. We're, we're, so I would disagree with those of you who say we don't have a right to express opinion because we haven't heard both sides. Tonight is not for hearing both sides, tonight is for expressing an opinion, our opinion, nobody else's opinion. Liz.
I think that it would be important for somebody to be at the meeting and only so that they can give us the information. I would like to know why they want a twelve hundred foot cul-de-sac, I don't think it's necessary, I don't think, what do you, a dead end?
Not a cul-de-sac.
Well, I know what that is, but, you know, I'm just, I don't think that it's necessary, I think we should stay with the way it normally is, if they're normally eight or ten houses, then why do we need twelve? I think that there needs to be a buffer, I'm gonna spend a lot of time at those ball fields in the next fifteen years and I don't wanna be looking in the back of people's houses at nights and seeing what they're doing in their living room. So, if, you know, I think.
Looking windows?
I don't want to, but if they, there's no trees, what am I gonna do? But I think that somebody needs to come back and report, I don't think that we need to make any decision.
If there's gonna be a quorum there, we should let them know there's gonna be a quorum there. And I seriously.
Well, I think, well, I think, again, I would say that I would go not as a member of the select board.
Yeah, but we're not.
You can't do that.
I can't do that.
Somebody from the select board can go and be a member of the select board and, you know.
But we can't, we can't take official action at that point in time, so I would suggest you mark, post a meeting for next Wednesday, whatever time the planning board wishes. If we all are there and we, we then kibbitz, take a vote and decide what you wanna do.
Okay, that's fine.
But then if three of us are there, even if you're not there or something, if three of us are there.
If three of us show up, then we can talk.
We can talk.
Right.
And we just have to.
But I think it's, Mike.
Post a meeting for the, um, your office.
Like, I, I get.
Both nights, but your office for that meeting, so we have a, we have a place that they can find us if they need us. You know, for the meeting purposes, if somebody wants to come in, we can't be meeting here.
Why can't you? You can be here and just observe.
Right, finance does it all the time.
I, they posted, yeah.
But Mike, I, I get what you're saying, we're not here to, you know, to, to, my opinion is we should hear every, all the facts.
I understand what you're saying.
Because in your argument, sir, is that there would be land to be taxed because there'd be a house on it, that's your argument.
Well, no.
There'd be more houses, more tax money.
There's a cross purpose here, the land we take away from the developer or owner, we lose the tax benefit to that. However, if we're gonna, the five hundred foot limits the amount of development that can happen, so the same amount of land gets spread among fewer houses and gets, still gets taxed.
But you lose, fewer houses.
Fewer houses.
So you get less tax.
You get, theoretically, you get less tax, but then we come back to the planning, what does the people in town want? A rural community, they still like cows roaming over fields. And we can't give them that. All right, so do I take it there's no motions on this issue?
Well, I, I mean, the buffers, I think we've already got a buffer.
I think, well, do you wanna take a motion?
We all agree that it's a buffer and we should have some kind of a.
I think one of the same, so I'll make a motion that.
Not to see something developed as a.
So one of the motions.
Can I see the planning and, so, where's the buffer that, what are you talking?
Between, well, the, it's an open space and then there's, that, it's just, uh, north of the project. It's behind one of the first A P Rs.
Oh, so it's this open space.
Well, it would be within there, Mike, that open space is a hundred forty feet.
Yeah, but this is the buffer here.
Yeah, this is the buffer they're allowing right now.
That we're talking about, saying we want.
Trees.
We want trees or we want ownership or what do we want?
But of the whole thing or just a portion of it?
Just nobody owns it.
Yeah, just a portion of it.
Just need.
Okay, how many fifty feet?
You know, less.
Well, I'm just saying, you need fifty feet to do it.
On the plan, that's about a hundred forty foot wide, they call it.
All right, so we're, we're asking for a buffer zone along the north side of the property, the south side of our property. Fifty feet wide, trees, are we looking to own it, are we looking for them to own it?
I would rather own it for that way we can take, we would be, make sure the trees are taken care of and not taken down.
And I don't think it. That, that could be in the homeowners association, maintain those trees and not put the burden on the town.
And not cut them down, and they don't have to worry about it.
Whatever the trees go down.
It could be a covenant in the, in the homeowners.
They fall down in a snowstorm, they fall down in a snowstorm.
Do you think that?
What if they own owners?
Right.
Imagine all those windows.
All right, is that a motion?
Well, I would say, I wouldn't be specific about how wide, but it has to be a minimum fifty feet, could be wider.
Yeah, all right, so that's a motion to take, to me, have a buffer, maintain the line in the north, south side of our property, north side of their property to a feet.
No. South side of our property, north side of their property.
It's on their property.
On their property. Maintain a buffer at least fifty feet with plantings and the ship, and the burden is gonna be on the housing homeowners association to maintain that buffer, is that what we're sending?
Correct.
Yes.
So moved.
We need a second.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor of, uh, hi. Here's a proposal, why don't we, we direct a letter from the stock board that we discuss the meeting tonight and that we would like to see a proposed, uh, that fifty foot, maximum fifty foot right of, maximum fifty foot buffer zone.
Minimum fifty foot.
Minimum fifty foot with plantings and put that on our stationery and send it to them as an official comment.
To, to the planning board.
Fifty feet is a lot.
I don't know if we need that much.
Well, if we're not.
You're not gonna put them in a straight line, I was hoping you'd stagger them.
But if we're not taking it into our possession, here's how wide it is.
Yeah, that's subject to the planning board deciding if it's fifty, forty, eighty, I'm just asking, Detroit isn't a board.
Right.
There's other natural features on that property, this isn't the only one, but this is the only one that was discussed tonight.
All right, is that, is that agreeable to the board to send the letter?
Yeah.
Reggie, you got it?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Do you wanna see, see that to the other butters or anyone else or anything like that?
No, we'll go into the reference at the hearing. By putting it on a letter, it goes, it'll be part of the file.
Okay.
That, do we have any other concern besides the buffer?
At this point, no.
You, you can hear what the other input is, but if you wanna give me a call during the reading.
Well, it won't be official action at that point in time.
No, we can at least hear what other butters are saying.
Well, we'll, we'll hear that as.
We'll hear it after you go.
Kurt, can we keep this for our.
We sure we can, that's.
All right. In some minutes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I want to, I want to show you on camera.
Go ahead, Hank.
Okay, I have two points, uh, first, a question, the majority has to plan implementation today, I haven't heard anything about this. I spent a lot of time on this plan, the town spent a great deal of money on this plan, uh, and I don't want it to sit on a shelf the way the community development plan we did ten or twelve years ago sat on a shelf. So, uh, I'm wondering what the select board has done to recruit the members and to solicit from the boards, uh, their representatives to this committee. Cause it would be nice to call a meeting, get things moving.
An email was sent out and only Housing Authority, Conservation Commission and Planning Board have given the names of the representatives. Historical said they're voting on their next meeting, I have not heard back from Park Commission, Finance Committee and Select Board.
And, um, we, we, I think we nominated you, made you a temporary chairman.
Yes.
That's why I'm here.
And I, I, we have.
I want to chair a meeting.
We have not heard.
Yeah, but this is.
We have not heard anything from at large, no residents.
We have heard.
No, no residents at large.
It also raises the question of, of who the other three residents at large?
Yeah, we haven't, we have, we posted it, nobody's come forward.
Okay, if you have any recruits, send their names forward so we can entertain them.
Okay, the other point, the other thing I wanted to say that came out of this meeting tonight, uh, and again, talking with my friend here about this. We are the only state out of fifty that does not give us any control over A R R lots.
Yeah.
We're the only state out of fifty that does not permit us to get something back from developers. Every other state seems to feel that it's not blackmail to require a developer to, uh, contribute to costs that are incurred by the community.
Like impact fees?
Pardon?
You're talking about impact fees?
Impact fees, I might call it that, yeah. There is in the state legislature and has been for literally decades, legislation, uh, which will reform the state zoning code and among other things, give towns control over A R R, give towns the right to impose impact fees, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. Apparently, the developers simply have too much sway and they keep holding this off. Uh, I would suggest that the planning board contact our local representative who supports it and whoever our new senator is going to be after next week, I guess. Uh, and urge them to support this legislation and I wish I could give you the acronym for it. Uh, it's going through so many, uh, iterations that lost track of it, it used to be called, uh, Cl- Clert, Comprehensive Land Use Reform Act, I'm not sure what it's called now.
Which board is it under?
Which board?
The which subcommittee is it under at the state?
I, I can't answer that, but if you, if you contact our state rep and our state senator, they can ask them to support this, maybe it can be squeezed out by the end of this session. What happens is, the legislative session's run for two years and most, for most of the reps who are not from small towns and, and who have representative meetings and have planning board, uh, planning departments, et cetera, this isn't very important to them. And so the two years expires and then it has to start all over again, go through a committee, et cetera, et cetera. Uh, so I think that this session expires shortly, uh, it might be helpful to give a little push to our state rep and to our senator to be. Uh, I will, see if I can recruit some at large members.
I'll speak to some family members to see if we can get somebody.
Okay.
Family.
Thank you.
Well, I would just like to put a footnote, I, I mean, Dave, your comment about extortion and everything.
I didn't say extortion.
I appreciate what you were saying, but impact fees, this, this, this compensation that we get in Massachusetts is in lieu of what every other state has. Every other state, I believe, there may be a couple of these like Massachusetts, but they have impact fees. They have a development effect, your schools, your police, your fire, they have impact fees which compensate for this. The best we can do in the absence of the right to assess these fees is to take some value and that's what we do in Massachusetts. So I don't really consider it to be extortion anymore than I think it is.
Well, I know you don't think I'm a politician and that's okay.
True.
But sometimes I do things just to talk about things, to have a discussion. And part of me, and I didn't mean to upset Hank, it was not my intent to upset Hank, but I wanted to talk about it because it's a perception of people I represent, like everyone else represents, and we have a discussion about it. And the hearsay and whatnot sort of is then addressed and it just totally said exactly what I expected you and Hank to say is that there is no compensation to the town and this is a way of compensation to the town. I get that, but I also have to be able to listen to people's concerns and they just can't be listening to Fox News where it just keeps getting rolled over and over and over and over and it becomes truth because it's so off-center and people believe it to be true. But that you have to come back and have a conversation about it. You have to have a conversation about it and, and again, it was not, yeah, it was not my intent to upset Mr. Barton, I did not mean to do that, cause I know it was a touchy issue with him.
You got it on the table, that's what you were.
I think it'd take more than that to upset Hank, but I think you, you may have hit one minor note with him. Um, any other comments in the public?
Now, impact fees, I want to just say a tax. We're forever taxing it. You know, taxes, this company, Billy Holmes, that's gonna get passed on to the guy who's buying a house. The taxes, this company, Billy Holmes, it's going to get passed on to the guy who's buying a house. They get passed on to us, no matter how you do it. If you get a piece of property in view of it, it's like the good guys are talking about, a thirty, forty, fifty, sixty foot buffer, aren't we ahead?
We may be, we might be, depends on how many kids we got.
That's what I'm saying, yeah, that's what I'm saying, the point, the point is, now...
It isn't, there's...
We get a fee, it's a one-time shot at a fee.
Right.
It's once.
But it is a tax, I understand what you're saying, it is a tax.
But, instead, we got thirty, forty, fifty, a hundred feet, whatever we get, and it either, or.
Well, that, and the problem with that is, we're only getting that because of the subdivision, and what they're talking about are lots that are on the street, which don't require any approval, which we would get, the developer can do for, without anything from us. We get nothing from them, we couldn't make him give us a blade of grass from those A and R lots, we couldn't get anything from them. He has a right to do those, and that's what they're talking about, is an impact fee on those lots that we have no control over. They can do as many of those as they want every day of the week, and they can bring in a hundred kids into the school system, and all we get is the cash on the house. It's the difference between an A and R, which is called an A and R, and a subdivision. Subdivision, you can trade off things, but A and R is nothing.
You might explain, you may have members of the public about A and R.
It's a lot with frontage on a public road that doesn't require any permission at all, the developer has...
As long as it has access.
As long as it has access to a public road, he can carve up his lot any way he wants, with no questions asked.
In this case here, yeah.
Yeah, in this case here, we're getting six A and R lots on top of a twelve-hundred-foot.
Exactly, but there are three, the other three are just...
Oh, there's three, the three are just...
There's three, yeah, existing.
Oh, I'm sorry, I just looked at the lines, I can pull the last ones down, let's see. Oh, okay. I'm sorry, so they're three. Alright, any further comments, public comments? Hearing none. Everybody have a chance to look at the minutes?
Uh, what's the minutes from last week? I have no problems with them, put these in, I expect you're out while we go.
Well, we had, we had some that were last, tables from, we had nine, ten, twenty-four, ten-two, ten-eight, there were tables from ten-twenty-two.
Yeah, but these new ones are nine, ten, nine, twenty-four, ten-two.
No, nine, ten was last, was last week, wasn't it?
Those are?
Mm-hmm.
The ones that are new are ten-twenty-two, eight-twenty-nine, eight-thirteen, eight-sixteen, seven-thirty. We had four, four sets of meetings, four or five.
Five.
The ones that weren't here last week, I had no problems with.
Nine, nine, ten, nine, twenty-four, ten-two, ten-eight, and ten-fifteen. Those are the ones that were here last week. Anybody have any problems?
Nope.
So, do you want to make a move to adopt them?
I'm going to move to adopt the units that were given to us last week.
Nine, ten, nine, twenty-four, ten-two, ten-eight, ten-fifteen, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Alright, and we'll review, since they're in your machines, take a home, review ten-twenty-two, eight-twenty-nine, eight-thirteen, eight-sixteen, seven-thirty for the next time.
Okay.
Question, have I read the agenda in this format, are we, are we doing these in-house or out of house now?
In-house, right.
Who's doing the minutes?
I am, I've been doing them.
I didn't...
This seems like a different format.
I didn't see it.
I did.
Let me go over here.
It was just, by the way, it said, it said girly.
It took the...
Yeah, but, I don't know what that means.
I thought you were questioning the... I think what you're referring to, reform it, is I just copied the agenda, and then just typed it in, that's all I do, yeah.
Instead of tracking separately, you just copy the agenda.
Right, right.
How, how many, hold far back a minute ago?
A little bit more, I'm trying to not bombard you, so next meeting I will give you five more.
Because when the other, in fairness to Reggie, that the piping of the minutes goes back to the other administrative assistant guy. Alright, moving on from that.
Make a motion to...
We got a bill Warren.
To...
From the, from the guy who opened yourself.
Oh, Donna, I saw that somewhere, or did I miss that? Oh, right there, the PR assistant collective, correcting. Retiring, Andy is retiring.
When is she going to retire? Oh, she is retiring.
She's retiring, oh, yeah, November.
How long is she here?
About thirteen years, I think.
We got a salary remaining, twelve ninety-four to fifteen, three Spencer with experience. Sixty-two hours by weekly. So, is it on, look at this job description, we can take it in here, in the UNR.
Current house, it's everyone I was with.
Well, because it's every other Tuesday night, so it's thirty hours one week, thirty-two the next week, so that's why I put sixty-two five weekly, because it's not really thirty-one each week.
Make a motion to approve.
Second, all in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Anything else, Donna?
No.
Done.
Donna, when you get...
I think that's for the Finance Committee next week, so it's okay if I...
When you get that back, can you give me a copy of the fully signed?
Make a motion for warrant, article fourteen dash eighteen, sixty-two thousand dollars, seven ninety, sixty-two thousand, seven ninety-five, and fifty-three cents.
There's a second.
Second, Ed can't sign them.
Yeah, all in favor?
Aye.
You oppose extensions? Next thing. CCFs, we did the PRF, no permits, no appointments, no special town meetings, reasons right now?
Um, I don't know, I was talking to Vicki, and we're going to re-get certified cash, we're going to have time to leave more, I'm sure she's a workaholic, but she makes the next day.
But we don't have an opinion on that, right?
Yeah, we still...
Sure. Um, the part-time employee thing, there's been some exchange of emails, I suppose, I both want to everybody, they just come from me here.
I haven't seen any.
The one for two town council?
Yeah.
Just you.
Alright.
Want me to send it to the remainder?
Yeah, do you want to discuss this now, or tomorrow?
I'll send it out tomorrow.
Yeah, it's not, they're not linked to you, we have them, we can copy them, they're two-second reviews, if you want to do it now, or you want to do it later.
You can do it later.
Alright, another note. There's one of them just came through this afternoon, I remember. Um, thank you. Well, we should talk about the meetings, November fifth, what's on the agenda?
Um, right now, nothing. Nobody scheduled or anything at this point. Yes, there's an election.
When is Finance coming?
The twelfth, twelve.
Alright, so do we need that meeting on the fifth? Is there any reason to have that in the year?
Well, if you, are you, oh, never mind, you guys were going to do the libree on this, the libree field on the sixth.
Yes, well, the meeting, that's a good assignment, but... You guys need your business, we have to...
If we have any business, we can sign it that night.
Yeah.
So...
You know, we just huddle in the corner of the room.
Do I hear a motion to cancel the November fifth?
So moved.
And meet the sixth.
And meet the sixth.
Okay.
No, is that payroll? Is that going to screw payroll?
It doesn't.
Okay.
I won't be here on the sixth.
Well, there's, well, three of us.
This one, for other...
Can I come in on the fifth and sign the warrants?
Yeah, I can sign when I come in, in the morning, in the afternoon, but they're supposed to be, according to Pat Cantor, we're supposed to put them and have them voted on at the meetings, so either way, it doesn't.
Okay. Let's have us on what I was...
And we, well, we'll do them on the, can we do them on the sixth?
I can do that.
So, you, now you have to come on the sixth.
Who, me?
Yes, you. You have to come on the sixth.
Yes, sir, sir.
The twelfth is Finance Committee? Yeah.
Twelfth is Finance Committee, we have anything on the nineteenth?
You do.
What's that?
You have your tax classification hearing at six-thirty, Kathy from ECAT at, she was originally at six-thirty, but I have to move her up to six-forty, and so far, that's it.
Well, is this just the follow-up from our previous meeting?
Yeah, for ECAT, yes.
We have discussed that one, Shelly. So, I'd like to discuss her amongst herself before we...
So, why don't we...
So, move her back.
Leave her on the nineteenth, but put that on the twelfth.
ECAT, okay.
To discuss it, I don't know. Anything else on the nineteenth?
What they do, we say the, the, Finance was the fault.
No, twelfth at six-thirty, and they want at least an hour.
Yeah, alright. So, and then the nineteenth, we'll do that one.
I saw an email today about a joint meeting, about position for policy procedures, when is that?
That, I did not schedule it, because we have to post it for fourteen days, I talked with Eileen today, she posted it today. So, that's tentative for the nineteenth.
Okay, that's our, our version, fourteen days, right, or is that a state law?
That's, I think that's in the bylaw.
Oh, well, okay, I think that's what I mean saying.
Mm-hmm, can we talk about that, you and I, um...
Oh, that's right, we, um, you want to do that now?
Well, I mean, if we're talking about it, or not?
We can't probably take a moment, oh, I don't know what that's saying. I can't make their personal policy meetings, because they meet at six o'clock on Wednesday. Liz, and since I'm dropping off the board the next time around, Liz has expressed an interest in being appointed to the president.
Make a motion to appoint Liz.
Well, I mean, we ran into this team before, it's not on here, I have no problem doing it on a temporary basis until we do it official. But a lot of this law has come back.
I nominate Liz as a backup representative to the NQB.
Alright, because it's just those six o'clock meetings, I can't give that.
If we put on the warrant next, uh, next time we do it.
But we can nominate her as the backup, but now...
Can put it on the twelfth, I think.
You want it on the twelfth?
Yeah, we'll do it on the twelfth.
We can wait, I guess.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think one meeting between now and then.
She's still going to meet.
Right, right.
Just, six o'clock is just too hard for me, I'd barely meet these six.
Did you want to talk about the ethics email?
Well, I don't know, it's a hearing, it's always, um, it hasn't appeared in the general press yet, so...
Long one.
Oh, it is?
Somebody, it was on the G News or something, somebody was asking me about it, yeah, I said, I don't know.
I think I called it before.
Oh, good thing you're in town.
They don't call me.
They don't call me either.
Um, so Steve Hyde has a hearing for ethics issues.
According, all I know is according to an email posting that I saw, which appeared to be a press release.
From Ethics?
I don't know where it came from, it certainly was entitled Ethics, but I didn't get it from Ethics.
No, it was by another chairman of Finance, or something.
I don't know, I didn't get it. Sometimes, I think someone picked it up and sent it to him, but we didn't get it. We still don't have it, right, it never came to us officially.
Mm-mm.
I just saw it in the news.
And there's a public records request?
Oh, yeah.
Which one, two, there's two.
Well, there's one, this is one that's...
One is solved. One is solved.
Solved?
And one has been taken care of.
Which one was that?
The copy of all the letters that the employees had sent anonymous.
Alright, and then there's Bianca wants...
She wants the minutes of the fifteenth, which they have been approved tonight, and then she's requesting a copy of the CD, which I've got a letter from ECAT of how much they charge, so that will be resolved as well.
Alright, I'm lost, I'm worrying.
So, it looks like the, the thing about Ethics was sent from Mrs. Dolan at the Ethics State, Commonwealth Ethics Office, to John Martin, it was regarding, um, um, former Chief Hyde allegedly used his position to submit false claims of, for payments to his son, and took home a fired department generated without authorization. And I guess it's going to be a hearing at some point in Suffolk Court, is what I'm seeing.
You know, David, I don't know whether that's appropriate, because we, it's not on the agenda.
Oh, I'm just, I was just wondering.
It'll be out in the media tomorrow, I'm told, so.
Okay.
Let that go. Um, the personal policy board, we did that, you're going to, you're going to send out the emails on the twenty hours.
I was going to work, you get any posting out there? So, I was going to turn...
Oh.
Has anything come in about it? Are they being collected in your, in your office? And I'm not opening them, Thursday's. How long is it posted for? To the seventeenth. Till November seventeenth.
Where's it posted in?
I don't know.
MMA and the Gazette.
Any trade?
It's supposed to be free physical posting from town.
Is it right?
Free physical posting, yeah, it's in the bylaw, when we get another one out. We usually put them more at the highway one to place, when it's not always school.
But isn't there a trade journal for, for highway supers?
Yes.
Is it in that?
MMA will carry a lot of the super tennis jobs, so won't, um, and they'll pick it up on the, on the wire. We'll move it to the other ones for free.
So, in an effort to not delay this any longer, if this, if you and I are meant to look at those applications, and we had, did we ask if anybody else from the town wanted to be part of that? That was posted. I just want me, yes, we did.
Well, clarification, you said last week that you thought that we opened it up for the people.
I thought we had, right, and it didn't.
It was just you and me who were appointed there. I have no problem with the people there, actually, you know, as long as we have some people in our field, in this field, it'd be very helpful.
So, can...
Even municipal government would be very helpful.
Can we organize that group before the seventeenth?
I would believe, I'd like to be ready to...
So, what do we need to do to do that? There's a charge in your packet tonight for the timeline, if you want to approve the Highway Screening Committee to get the job done within a timeline, it's in your packet, ready to go. Like I said, you've got two letters already, you had one verbal, did not submit a letter, and so, and I, in doing the minutes, I've also recall, Ed, you had stated, I think it was Mr. Pellarmel was interested in serving in the highway.
Yeah, but I think he got any other committees since then, you know, he did.
Did you want to see if he would?
I'll ask.
Want me to ask him if, if that...
Will you see him or ask him, I'll ask him, I know.
Then there's your five.
Barry wants to three, but he'd happy to have him.
But there's your...
Ask someone like John Martin?
John Martin said no.
John, John's on...
No, I'm sorry, who's, who's the John on planning?
Furman.
John Furman, I think he is in the industry, he's on the planning board, he knows the scope of the town, I think, yeah, I think he'd be a good, thank you.
I would just like to, you know, organize a meeting for that first, you know, let's not wait till two weeks after.
What job description, not job description, the charge.
Where is it? I know, it's at the end of your packet.
Page?
Um, I think it was forty-nine pages. And just to clarify, as far as the posting and advertisement for the job vacancy notices advert, in the bylaw, under four dash three B, it says that the vacant positions are to be posted for ten days in Town Hall Bulletin Board, and job vacancy notices be placed in local newspaper for at least fourteen days prior to the closing date for applications, is what it says.
You know, we've always put in three spots, and then a five-minute spot on public...
Okay, okay.
It's not a big thing, it should be posted in here.
Yeah. Alright, so I'm reading in the right place, Highway, the screening committee charge, and it says the committee is to be comprised of five members, so at the moment, we have two.
So, this is...
All the way at the end.
Mine?
I can't.
So, that is forty-five to forty-nine. I would, my comment is, the committee is comprised of up to five people pursuing that.
Okay.
The screening committee shall recommend three candidates to select them, I'm agreeing with that, by November twenty-sixth, good. Recommendation shall be unranked, and the finalists must be uniformly examined before they can make the recommendation. Yep. And carrying out the tie, excuse me, Mike, I don't want you to ask this.
Carrying out the charge, screening.
The screening committee will utilize the position description adopted by the select board. I'm just confused to get.
It's in your minutes.
What is it?
You, the board members approved the job description.
Oh, job description, I'm sorry, you're right, that's fine. To the extent permitted by law, it shall maintain the names of any information about candidates in strict confidence until a vote is recommended, recommended. I have no problem with that, but information does get out.
Right.
Um, I would feel more comfortable, I would try to get it strictly, in strict confidence as possible, but, you know...
Both that's to the extent permitted by law, which shall maintain the names in any in confidence until, until it's a recommendation. I think that's the law, right to maintain them until you vote them.
Mm-hmm.
You don't have to.
So you've received two letters already. You've received Mr. Art Lawrence and Darcy Gasperini, who would like to be on this committee?
Oh, they would like to be on.
Darcy is, okay. I think Mike Furman might be.
Well, we could, I would send a letter out to those people and say, come on.
And so then.
That's four.
Yeah.
And if John Jones is five, would we get another one? That's fine.
Yeah.
So why don't.
And I could probably step down, just advise.
There you go.
So why don't we, someone make a motion to send letters and what that.
I just like people who are experienced and have, I mean, for me, I'm happy to be on the committee, but I'm, I'm not 100% familiar with.
Much lady. That's goodness.
So far, I mean, it's all, it's just me, it's just somebody with a construction background and his job description, I guess I'll have to say.
Well, why don't we take the two people, someone make a motion.
Make a motion to appoint those two people.
And send out letters to appointing them.
Do we have a second?
Who's going to be temporary chairman?
I am, so then, go ahead.
So, and making a note that Liz is the temporary chairman and we'll be in contact with them when you're ready to schedule a meeting?
Yeah, I'm ready.
All right.
Can we not?
We can schedule a meeting before we have all the other.
That's what I want to do. So if the last day is to get them is on the 17th, then either the 18th, which is Monday that very next day, or not that day and not that day, or the 21st is on Thursday.
Why can't we meet a week before to get organized and resolve questions?
You're going to have to communicate with the other members to see what.
That's fine. Send me all of their information, that's fine, and then I'll just come up with, you know, two or three dates and.
That'll be good.
We'll get the best time.
You can call in and verify.
Okay.
Is it okay if she puts your phone number or address in her, in our letter to them?
Yes, okay.
She's the chairman and she will be in touch with them, but if they have any questions, please contact Ms. Furman.
Okay.
I suppose we can put down, you anticipate a meet, a first meeting on.
The.
You may want to throw all that little detail in so they understand the process and what we're doing, the dates.
Right, but I'm saying, so we can notify, she's the chairman, you anticipate a meeting on.
The week of.
I want to say the 14th, it's a Thursday. But that cannot just be tentative because I.
Tensive meeting is, you know, we'll, we'll advise the final date.
Okay.
Or final, or permanent, whatever.
But also you put Mike, the other stuff into it, so they understand the task.
Yeah.
So you'll send the letter to them and then they, and give me the information and I can contact. Okay.
Okay.
I'll get hold of Jim. Well, you're going to see Jimmy Quayle.
I'll see him on Friday.
Okay, we'll talk.
Mm-hmm.
Coming back to the agenda. We'll, we'll account for something tonight.
Don't you like crossing things off?
Schedule the next Town Hall communications. Anybody want to take a shot, Donna?
Where are you on that?
Donna, discuss your items.
Do we want to follow up in so many weeks or?
You're supposed to do a survey, Dave. You're supposed to do survey questions.
Oh, yeah.
Well, since we canceled our meeting last week, you bought yourself a week, so I think that we should put you on the agenda for the 12th after we talk to the finance committee about how your survey is.
You could have a rough draft.
You stayed hip blush.
That hasn't happened in six years.
Sorry.
Do write that down.
Sometimes you stick your foot right in it.
Draft, draft survey, draft survey monkey due to Select Board November 12th, 7:30.
All right, there you go.
Do we see the questions before it's done?
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
Yeah, he has to bring us first.
I just want to emphasize that.
Oh. Anything else anybody wants to do?
And you have no money in the budget, by the way.
Survey monkey's free.
Where are you? What, where?
Survey monkey's free.
Oh, it's free here. Should I be telling me something? Anything else? Do we have anything we missed? Anybody want, any issues that need to be discussed? Anything further from the public? Hearing none? Somebody speak up?
The only question I have is.
Damn it.
We were close. We were close with the school. We're still just about wound up on that and finished. We were quite some times. But I saw some emails going from the contractor to me and maybe to Reggie, and Reggie sent something to me and Kurt Jergensen and Vicki and Donna in regards to the 55% reimbursement. And I'm not pointing fingers at anybody, but you know, we could have gotten some of this money along the way, but we need to talk to Kurt because I think Kurt does that and Jergensen does reimbursement through their office. But we need to see if he is going because somebody's got to be going with this.
Okay.
Okay? And I'll, I'll get ahold of him and I'll talk to him tomorrow, but we need to get on this and get these up.
I have one more thing.
All right, and I have one too.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure that everybody knew that the fire station was having their open house. Is it the 2nd or the 9th?
December.
No, November, the 9th, November 9th, they're having an open house. So it'd just be nice if people could stop in and take a look and recognize all their hard work.
But it's also, I was talking to one of the department last night, it's also recognition of us going to ALS.
Recognize all their hard work.
Yeah.
What time is that, Liz? Liz?
I think it's 12 to.
Five?
Five, I think is ringing a bell.
It's on, it's on the internet. Is that a Saturday?
It's on Saturday, yeah.
What's this higher rate payment?
I wanted to give that to you to.
It's on the 10th.
I'll explain different, it's just for you for.
I thought you said it was.
All right. Going once, going twice again.
Hit the wrong button.
Going once, going twice again. And a motion?
Motion to adjourn.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you all.
Donna, is something happening?